Good morning. Let's see, Mr. Cannon?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Nader?
Here.
Mr. Hersaug?
Here.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, report from the planning director.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Commission. E. G. Avadi, Planning Services Division. My notes are on a small sticky, so that'll probably be the brevity of my comments. Couple of board meetings to comment on. January 28th, Board of Supervisors approved the first Plaster County Sustainability Plan. Just this past Tuesday, they considered the Schaefer's Mill General Plan Amendment, MAP and CUP modification that you recently heard and recommended approval on. They also approved that as well. For Planning Commission, I think you all know that we're going to be canceling the February 27th meeting. And then, so our next meeting will be March 12th. We'll actually have, probably have both meetings in March, the 12th and the 26th. Don't know exactly what's going to be on those agendas, but as I've mentioned before, the Plaster County Conservation Plan is getting very close, so that's likely to be at a March meeting. And then, the Hidden Falls Draft EIR Meeting will most likely occur during March sometime as well. So we're still waiting on the timing of those documents and release of the draft to determine that date.
A question on Hidden Falls. That's just a hearing on the environmental document.
Exactly.
All right.
Yep. And that's, that's all I have.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, now's the time for public comment on those items not on the agenda. Seeing no one come forward, we have the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull items off the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion that we-
Before we do a motion, we should ask the public if any of the public wants to-
I'm sorry.
-pull anyone for consent.
I think I did that last week too, or last- So is there anyone in the public who wants to comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all right.
To move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. You have a first and a second. Roll call.
I have a first from Mr. Hersaug, a second from Mr. Moss. So a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Abstain.
Mr. Hersaug?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison? Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, it looks like we have to wait one minute for the timed item. Is that correct? All right, so we'll wait until 10:05. All right, looking at my watch, it appears we're at 10:05, so item number one, the Premier Granite Bay Town Home Subdivision Modification and Conditional Use Permit Modification.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Chris Schmidt, the Planning Services Division. The project before you today is a modification of a previously approved subdivision in the Granite Bay area. Project site is 8.2 acres located on the north side of Douglas Boulevard, west of Auburn-Folsom Road. A zoning on this site is, see, general commercial with a use permit designation. Most of the site is vacant. There is a boat storage and repair facility and a portion of the parcel along Douglas to show some of the habitat on site, a lot of oaks. The approved site plan is shown here, 52 duplex units located along private roads with one ungated entrance from Douglas Boulevard. Project was originally approved in October 2007. The applicant at the time sold the property in 2010. The subdivision received a few state extensions, extending the expiration date to October 23rd, 2017. The previous owner of the site received a two-year extension in 2017 with an expiration of October 23rd, 2019. Premier Homes applicant of today's application repurchased the site last summer and asked for a second two-year extension last fall, which your commission approved in October, extending the map through October 23rd, 2021. So I'll walk you through the proposed modifications. They're proposing to pave an area that was going to be common area to create a better access of a loop along the northwest corner of the site, removing three stub roads, realigning a stub road on the eastern portion of the site, removing a roundabout, a slight reduction in the amount of common area open space, adding some community facilities for the residents. And the major change is reorienting 10 lots to be accessible from the interior roads rather from the, rather than the stub streets. And this shows the revised proposal. And what it looks like with the proposed units on the site. No change in the number of proposals, or number of units proposed. This shows the edge conditions. These are the units that were rotated and how that looks. So this was the major change that's requiring the subdivision modification. There are some modifications to the conditions of approval, most of them are minor and cleanup. One of the biggest changes is to Condition 49, we're proposing to remove it. The open space originally around, or the lot area around the units was originally going to be maintained by an HOA. Now will be the responsibility of the individual buyers of the units. Just a comparison between the approved and the proposed project, very similar, same number of units, slightly larger lots, a reduction in open space that we talked about, guest parking spaces increased by two, unit sizes slightly larger, and still no gated entry. The project applicant, to their credit, met with the adjacent property owners of the seven owners. Five showed up in a meeting in January. All five expressed support for the change. And two that did not attend, property owners expressed their feeling that the two would also support what's being proposed. So staff did look at the new proposal and compared it to what was approved previously. There's no new impacts and no new mitigation required. And with that, staff recommends the planning commission adopt the addendum to the 2007 mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program prepared for the project, approve the modified subdivision as shown in Attachment B, subject to the modified conditions of approval, Attachment C of the staff report, and supported by the findings contained in the staff report. Also approve the conditional use permit modification for the Premier Granite Bay Town Homes project, subject to the modified conditions of approval found in Attachment C of the staff report and supported by the findings contained therein. May be happy to answer any questions.
Does the commission have questions? It's not? Thank you. And at this time, we'll-
I have a question. You do? Yeah. One of the things that jumps out to me is there's no EVA and there's a large number of buildings in this site.
It's hard to see, but there is an EVA here to the commercial project to the west.
There's what now?
That remains unchanged. There is, there is an EVA proposed for the southwest corner, and that would connect to a commercial development that's located here.
That doesn't show on the map?
It's hard to see. It's labeled, but it's not shown in any color.
Okay. I'll take a closer look then.
Okay. There is an EVA.
Yeah, take them off.
Mr. Chair, for the benefit of those here, that acronym, emergency vehicle accident.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions of the commission? Seeing none, thank you. So at this time, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? Please come on. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Thank you. Okay, first of all, we'll start with the applicant. Does the applicant want to speak? Sorry.
Good morning. My name is Kevin Waitrip, and I'm the President of Premier Homes, and thank you for doing this today. Yeah, Chris laid it out well. We've been involved in this property for quite some time, and we really had a vision for it. And as we've come through to the place where we're ready to bring it to fruition and go to work on it, we've decided there'd be some things that could serve basically surrounding properties better, the flow internally a little better, cut down some of the asphalt, these park streets that actually had noise and automobiles closer to current neighbors, and then also make the community a little more, feel a little more friendly to the future homeowners there as it's all more internal facing instead of off the little side stub streets. That was the primary goal and what we wanted to look at doing here. So we have maintained everything as was originally in the approved map that we can, other than the configuration and basically the orientation change, but our impacts have not changed externally. And so, yeah, any questions you have, I'm open to answer.
Any questions of the commission or the applicant? I guess not, so thank you.
Okay.
All right. At this time, anyone in the community like to speak on this item? And I thought I saw a hand previously. So if not, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
I would move we adopt the addendum to the 2007 mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program prepared for the project.
Second.
You have a first and a second. Roll call.
I have a first from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Cannon. So a vote from Mr. Cannon.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersaug?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would further move that we approve the modified subdivision as shown in Attachment B, subject to the modified conditions of approval, Attachment C, and supported by the findings contained in the staff.
Second.
You have a first and a second. Roll call.
First from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Cannon. So a vote from Mr. Cannon.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersaug?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
And finally, I would move that we approve the conditioned use permit modification for the Premier Granite Bay Town Homes project, subject to the modified conditions of approval found in Attachment C and supported by the findings in the staff report.
Second.
You have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
I have a first from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Cannon. A vote from Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersaug?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
And Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And according to my watch, we just hit 10:15, so at this time-
You gotta do one more thing.
What's that?
Okay. There's a few.
Ah, okay. So if somebody wants to appeal, the appeal fee is $619, and I believe you have 10 calendar days to submit that appeal. There it is. All right. All right. So at this time, then, we have the Winery and Farm Brewery ZTA zoning text amendment. So that the staff report, I believe Nikki.
Got through the first item too quick.
Exactly. I know she has a lot of room.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All righty, good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Nikki Strigan, as you, you know, Senior Planner with Planning Services Division here today, here this morning, to present the Winery and Farm Brewery zoning text amendment. I want to point out some other staff and our consultant in the room. Nick Papani is here from Rini Planning and Management, and then staff from the various department that conduct development review and review on projects like this are here. And then I believe our ag commissioner, maybe not here yet, but Josh Huntsinger may be in the room. So by way of background here, I'm going to jump straight in. The ordinance that we regulate wineries under was adopted in 2008, and it was revisited in 2013 predominantly to address promotional events. Previous workshops were held with your commission between 2014 and 2017, and at one point there was a mitigated negative declaration that was actually prepared. It was brought forth to your commission, and then it was decided that further environmental review was necessary, and so an EIR was determined to be prepared. A notice of preparation for that EIR was published in October of 2017. A public scoping meeting was held in November of 2017, and about a year and a half later, that draft EIR was released between April and June of just this past year. And then on January 31st of this year, the final EIR was released. A brief kind of industry, little industry snapshot here, the first two numbers are actually taken from the 2018 crop report that was produced by the Agricultural Commissioner's Office. That is by and large done through voluntary surveying and that kind of thing, but showing almost 300 acres of grapes in Plaster County, $1.5 million from grape and wine products. From our data, as far as building permit data and other data at the, at the Community Development Resource Agency, 17 total tasting rooms have been permitted in the county, and there are three farm breweries that have been permitted in the past six years. So all of this data conveying that the industry is small but growing, a growing sector in the county. Here's a quick snapshot of the kinds of facilities we have. So wineries only, rather, wineries and farm breweries only, 17 total. In the unincorporated county, there are two by appointment only wineries in the county and, I'm sorry, there are 17 public tasting rooms. That includes our farm breweries, four, four wineries that are just production facilities, and then two facilities that are by appointment only. Those are wineries by appointment only. Plaster County regulates wineries under Section 1756-330, and I want to emphasize that there are a few of land uses that are recognized on, in this code, in this section of the code. They kind of all hinge on one another. So from the bottom up in this graph, you can see crop production is kind of the foundational land use that we, we use to make a determination. Then we have the farm or farm brewery or the winery. That is the actual production facility where agricultural processing takes place. So that is a facility that is by and large regulated by federal and, and the feds and the state. It's licensed in accordance with those other agencies and meets a whole slew of regulations that are not otherwise determined by local government. Public tasting is allowed in conjunction, or you could say as an accessory to a winery or a farm brewery, and that is obviously the location where people go to try the beverage, to have a certain type of experience and so forth. And then finally, accessory to the public tasting room allowance, you can think of events as, as allowed on top of that. So promotional events are allowed today, subject to an administrative review permit at a maximum of six per year. That's the current regulation. We're going to get into the project description, but at the, at the onset of this project, we looked at the objective, which was by and large to preserve and protect farmland, to enhance the economic viability of agricultural operations, including the sale of value-added products, to support the tenants of agritourism, and also to balance the needs of various stakeholder groups and address any land use conflicts. This is our project area, and so this graphic actually does appear in our draft environmental impact report. It shows the public tasting rooms that were actually permitted at the time that the notice of preparation was released, so it doesn't include a few of our farm breweries that were permitted after 2017, or late in 2017. But you can see on this map, it represents the, a little small, but you can see that it represents all the facilities in numbered in yellow circles. So there's 17 of them outlined there and where they are as far as geographic location in the county. Also shown on this map is zoning, so the dark green, the light green, and then there's some lighter yellow around the Horseshoe, Barpenrin and Granite Bay area. That represents zoning, which is an important factor here because certain allowances are afforded in certain zone districts. And then it also, also shows the predominant area of impact. So that dashed black line that you see is an area that was identified generally because of soil characteristics for growing hops and grapes, climates and microclimates, and it also encompasses sort of this existing area of synergy where we have these facilities clustered, sort of a, an inherent characteristic you need for a wine trail or an ale trail and that kind of thing. The project description, obviously the whole of the project is the entire zoning text amendment. That's, that's what's moving, that's what's proposed, but the general changes are outlined in these 10 items that I'm going to go over this morning. And I'll discuss each of these briefly, but the, the first is that the code section we're talking about, which is titled "Wineries," is proposed to reflect wineries and farm breweries in the title moving forward. We're going to look at the definition for a farm brewery. We'll take a closer look at the minimum agricultural standards. We'll look at how we're dividing promotional events into now agricultural promotional events and special events, and then the sort of regulatory provisions and allowances for both of those things. We will take a look at the proposal for the new 10-acre acre minimum parcel size tied to by right events, hours of operation, new standards for water and waste disposal, or rather, updated standards for water and waste disposal, updated standards for access, and then of course, the addition of the accessory use restaurant as allowable by a conditional use permit. So I'm going to go through these one by one. The first one, as far as bringing the farm brewery, a formal farm brewery definition into this code section, the definition reads, "A farm brewery is a facility for the brewing and bottling of beer that produces less than 1,500 barrels of product per year. It grows hops and the agricultural products necessary for making the beverage on site. It is bonded through TTB and has a California ABC license type 23, referred to as a small beer manufacturer license." With the support from our agricultural commission, the advice from our agricultural commission, the agricultural minimum standard, which is currently one acre planted on site or one acre sourced locally, is being amended to say that at least two acres need to be planted on site. So that's vineyard, hop yard, hop yard, or another agricultural product as determined by the agricultural commissioner. This is, this, the, the next three or four rather slides pertain to agricultural promotional events and special events. So the current term that we use is promotional events, but we're sort of bifurcating that into two different definitions, one agricultural promotional, the other special. An agricultural promotional event is directly related to the education and marketing of wine and craft beer to consumers. It includes, but is not limited to wine and brewmaster dinners, pickup parties, release parties, and membership club parties. An agricultural promotional event accommodates 50 people or less at one time, and if it's greater than 50 people at one time, those events shall be regulated in the same manner as a special event. A special event is an event of greater than 50 people at one time where the agricultural component is subordinate to the primary purpose of the event. Outside alcohol may be allowed at these events, and they are events where the property owner may be compensated in exchange for the use of the site, often referred to as a facility So here is a table that shows up in the code that applies if more than 50 people are at an agricultural promotional event or if the event is considered to be a special event. And there's a lot of text on here. In summary, it's tying the parcel size to the amount of people that can be present to the frequency per year. So the bigger the property, the more attendees can be there and the more times it can occur. So we'll take a look at the third line here for 20-plus acre properties. 200 attendees can be present at a special event at one time, and that is allowed 12 times per year. On the far right side, you can see the use permit requirement. The Cs stand for zoning clearance. That simply means it is allowed by right. That is by and large what was analyzed in our environmental impact report. The minor use permit on the first line is tied to how use permits are now required for proposals under 10 acres, and we'll get to that in a moment.
Excuse me?
Yes.
The, the conditional use permit or the zoning clearance, that's not taking place for each event, is it?
No.
That's, so that's the site being, being analyzed and then cleared for-
Yeah, somebody comes in for a, for a 20-plus acre, a winery on 20-plus acres, we analyze it as part of their building permit, as part of the review of that project initially by right. These, these all run with the land by right for the, for the year, right? These are actually, these are yearly, the 12 per year is what's established here. For the minor use permits, those absolutely run with the land, just like any other land use entitlement. One land use entitlement would describe whatever their event requests are.
So the zoning clearance, though, that is, is a ministerial type permit as opposed to discretionary?
So here's a look at some of the typical types of events that you might see allowed by right under the proposed zoning text amendment. The agricultural promotional, you can see here on the left, also very small, agricultural promotional events, so that's less than 50 attendees at one time, include events such as a 50-person winemaker dinner, a 40-person wine pickup party, or even a 35-person birthday party or anniversary party or something along those lines, so long as the alcohol, or rather, the beverage made on site is what's being served. On the right-hand side, you can see some examples of special events, so that's 50 people or more at one time if it's ag promotional or falls under the special event definition. So examples of that include a 75-person winemaker dinner, a 150-person fundraiser, and a 200-person wedding. Now weddings, we did analyze as a special event. They will, that would always kind of be bucketed into that, that category, but that is something that would be allowed by, by right for certain parcels of a certain size.
So are these all capped at the 6 and 12 events per year?
Right, depending on the parcel size, correct. On the right-hand side, they're capped, sorry, on the right-hand side, these are capped at 6 to 12 per year. On the left-hand side, these are allowed without a cap.
So as many events as possible, as they want.
Correct.
And Nikki, the numbers, the 75, the 150, those are just thrown out for example?
Just as examples.
Any, any one of those could have up to 200 attendees?
Depending on the parcel size, yep.
If the parcel size was large enough, the rest of that's just kind of for example?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Refresh my memory, is why weddings count as a different event and aren't just lumped into events in general?
Yeah, so we looked at them a little differently. One, they tend to be larger, although that's not always true, but they tend to be larger. They also tend to be louder. And so we also identified that, you know, they, the sort of agricultural promotional nature of them, while, yeah, you could make an argument that you're, you know, marketing to a large group of people, they just seem different to us, right? Different land use to us. And so we analyze them as less frequent. Again, like just looking at the foundational use here, this is a winery, right? It's not an event, it's not an event center, this is a winery.
And I guess I understand that. My concern is the more specificity into the type of event, the more of an enforcement nightmare we're creating. You're allowed an event or a number of events. What the occasion for that event is should be of much less importance to the county than the frequency and how long they last and things that may affect the neighbors.
Yeah, I think what you're touching on is these lists, what we've listed out was not intended to be totally exhaustive. I mean, in the case of a wedding, we did make a determination there. It was a different kind of thing based on their size and characteristics. But, you know, as far as an agricultural promotional event, they really were designed to promote what is made by the winery or the farm brewery. So understood what you're saying, though, the sort of tighter we get with listing these things, if really what we care about is the number of people who are there and those impacts, you're sort of questioning that.
Say, yes.
Okay, let me keep going here. So I had mentioned that the proposal defines a new 10-acre minimum parcel size, and that's for by right tasting rooms. That is for the ag-exclusive farm and forest zone districts. So the minimum parcel size is proposed to increase from 4.6 to 10 acres for any new production facility with a tasting room without a use permit. Now, that isn't to say that tasting rooms are not, they are still allowed on those smaller acreages, subject, however, to a minor use permit. And again, this was determined because events are coming by right is part of the proposal, and the thought was, you know, the infrastructure needed to accommodate those, buffering for impacts like noise would make more sense by right on larger parcels. Additionally, production is still allowed by right on those smaller properties, so that still could occur and is allowed under the proposed ordinance. Looking at hours of operation, these are also stated in the code, so all facilities, this is how the code reads, "All facilities shall be allowed to conduct normal tasting hours from 10 to 6:00. Events shall be allowed 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Friday and Saturday, and 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Sunday through Thursday." And the code does read that if a winery or a farm brewery is required to have a minor use permit or a conditional use permit by this ordinance, or it has an existing permit, limits on those hours of operation would be placed in accordance with the conditions on that permit. The update to standards for potable water and waste disposal are largely kind of clarifications that are tied to state regulations and enforced by our environmental health department. So it clarifies that potable water standards are required consistent with state regulations, in particular, this requirement for a public water system. If a facility serves at least 25 individuals daily, at least 60 days out of a year, it is required to have a public water system. And then finally, the regional water quality control board has a permit requirement, and so we've added some code language in here to state that wastewater discharge needs to be in compliance with that.
Question?
Yes.
Yeah, the word "public water system," what's the definition of that? I mean, is it?
It is, it is, and I'm going to give you a high-level definition, and we can have our environmental health services group speak to that, but it is, it has a higher standard of testing for various, am I thinking? There is some monitoring tied to it. There's a higher, a higher standard for, yes, contaminants, and it's constructed a little bit differently. The sealant on it is a little bit different, so it has different construction, different monitoring and testing requirements.
Okay, so it could still be a well?
It is a well, yes, yes.
Yeah, interpreting what a public, you know, what a lot of this public water system is, you know, piped into your house?
Correct, right, yeah.
We're not talking about that. We're talking about a well that has extra standards associated with it?
Correct, it is a type of well, so higher standards, higher thresholds than just residential well.
Okay, thank you.
There's also some updates proposed to the access or standards for access section, and I'll summarize these quickly. For a county-maintained road, a paved commercial encroachment shall be required according to the county land development manual and the local fire-serving district. For non-county maintained roads, and this is identical to the provisions in the agricultural event center ordinance, we've carried that language over to this proposed zoning text, "An encroachment permit," it reads, "shall be required according to the county land development manual and local fire-serving district where the non-county maintained road connects to the county maintained road." And that in addition to that, proof of access rights are required, and in addition to that, approval from the road maintenance association or homeowners association or the majority of the individuals who have rights, access rights to the road is required. And then finally, a proposal for a road maintenance obligation would be required. Again, these are identical to what is in the agricultural event center ordinance, and we've carried it over here for some consistency.
Okay, so another question. A majority is 51%? The reason I ask, at their time, they talked about 75.
I'm sorry?
At one time, they were talking about 75%.
Yeah.
But here, we're just talking about 50%.
It reads "majority," correct, yep. Okay, and then finally, this is, yes, this is our 10th item in the project description, the addition of the accessory use restaurant, that it is proposed to be allowed, so that is food service and preparation, as long as it is subordinate to the primary use on the property as a winery or a farm brewery, and also subject to a conditional use permit. We will obviously come back to this. It's a sort of key issue that a lot of comments on the draft DIR spoke to, and we'll talk to that a little bit more.
Nikki, is farm zone different than agricultural zone?
Than agricultural exclusive? Yeah, yes, AE, agricultural exclusive, is different than our farm zone district. We have very little ag-exclusive in the county.
Or even like ag-residential? Is that?
It is different than residential agriculture. Yeah. Ag-exclusive farm and forest sort of carries more similar characteristics in that they prioritize commercial activity over the residential activity by definition, whereas our residential agricultural zone district puts residential first, right? So there are a number of refinements that were made to the text since the June 8, 2017 planning commission workshop. These were, these are as follows. And so the boutique winery definition that was in the very first proposal was removed because staff was making an attempt to sort of streamline permitting for those producing, you know, 2,500 cases and under, for example, for wineries, these very, very small facilities. And so we were really looking for a one-size-fits-all approach, but we couldn't find it based on the unique kind of characteristics of every parcel that these are proposed on and those kinds of things. And so we felt that through continued work with the winery task force, the winery and farm brewery task force, that's a group of us that often consult with incoming facilities and also have worked on this zoning text amendment, we felt that that continued work with consultation of these types of small operators would better serve them. And functionally, it didn't really do anything different than our small winery definition, which broadly covers case production under 20,000. Additionally, an ARP requirement was added for facilities within the resort zone district. So largely, this was done in order to conduct adequate analysis under subsequent environmental review through an ARP for facilities in this zone district. It was sort of a cleaner way for us to address that. For agricultural promotional events, it was clarified in the project description that it wasn't the intent to look at a threshold of 50 people at one time rather than a finite cap, so 50 people total was not the intent, rather, 50 people at one time. And this was to accommodate for the kind of events that you see for like a release party on a Friday from 6:00 to 10:00. You know, people aren't there all the time. They're kind of coming and going, picking up what they need to pick up, maybe having something to eat from a caterer and then leaving. So that sort of rolling nature, that's the term you see in the draft DIR, that rolling nature is what we were intending to capture here.
So a little further clarification for me, if you would. If there is an event scheduled that has 50 attendees going to show up at one time, and at the time that event goes to start, there might be five people from the general public in the tasting room. Is it going to be the obligation of the operator to kick those five people out and send them on their way so they don't exceed the 50 people, or are they not excluded in the count?
They wouldn't be excluded in the count. So this DIR, and Nick might be able to get into this a little further when you have questions later on, but when you look at the net new allowance. So day-to-day operations, those five people lingering there, you know, are allowed already. So we really looked at what's net new, what's allowed on top of that. So the answer is no, you would not have to kick out those five people. We have assumed that, you know, largely, a lot of our facilities can't, they don't have the capacity to have events while their tasting room is open, but they can, and we've analyzed that they could.
Do you have a question? Yeah. See, I see a chart here that lists all the wineries that exist in the county so far. And of course, most of them have a minor use permit already, but there's some that have a permit process or something that's called a PTOE. What's that?
That sounds like a temporary outdoor event. TOE sounds like a temporary outdoor event. I'm not really sure what you're looking at.
In their cases, issued annually?
Those are issued annually, so temporary outdoor events are afforded two times per year to any, any land use. Two times per year, not to exceed three days in a row. Often, for example, Placer County Vittner's Association might apply it to those, apply for those as a, for an industry-wide event, but others have applied to those. Mandarin Orchards have applied for those to have events on their properties. But those are issued annually, and they encompass two events per year.
Okay, so some of these are wineries that have that, so apparently, they're just going to have just two tastings a year, or two what?
Two, two outdoor events per year. So for clarification, temporary outdoor events are not analyzed under this, those are allowed on top of all of this because they are afforded today.
Okay, so they don't really have tasting rooms because they don't have a minor use permit as of current?
Some of the wineries that I think you're looking at also are allowed by right. And again, I'm not sure what you're looking at, but...
What's the chart that was put out by Sherri Conway? Talks about winery permit status?
I'm not familiar with this, but it's something I can take a look at if you, as you kind of get into your questions and so forth, I'll take a look at it, yeah.
Yeah, we're just really wondering where we're at in terms of where we're going, so this must be where we're at, so that's a reasonable question.
Well, for clarification on the temporary outdoor events, those may have been identified associated with any of our facilities because they can apply for them today, and many of them do. Okay, and then finally, the refinement, which I've pointed out already in the project description, is the accessory use restaurant allowed subject to a conditional use permit. I'll keep going here. I had mentioned that this item was before the commission before, and actually, an initial study and a mitigated negative declaration were what was written as part of that prior proposal. As a result of comments received on that environmental document, it was determined that an DIR be prepared. And so the impacts analyzed in the draft DIR are identified here. They include a number of resource areas, and they also take into account cumulative impacts. From that list, the less-than-significant impacts with no mitigation are identified here on the left. And then the less-than-significant impacts with mitigation are identified here on the right. So those include resource chapters for biological resources, cultural resources, and noise. There is a significant and unavoidable impact associated with this project. It is a cumulative impact in the transportation and circulation area, and specifically at the intersection of State Route 49 and Kramer. Now, this particular impact was identified because they are by and large, they're outside of the county's jurisdiction, and so the county couldn't guarantee that the improvements would be completed, so the DIR considers those impacts significant and unavoidable. The California Environmental Quality Act requires that an DIR analyze alternatives that meet most or all of the project alternatives while reducing the magnitude of or avoiding one or more significant environmental effects of the project. And so there are three alternatives that we looked at. One is a no-project alternative. The other is a conditional use permit tied to weddings, so weddings would not be permitted by right. Instead, each facility would be required to obtain a conditional use permit. And then finally, a reduced scale alternative whereby the agricultural promotional events, which are allowed without limitation, would be capped at a number of 38 days per year. I make a note here that 59 was analyzed in the draft DIR to show a worst-case scenario because of reasons tied to that sort of public well standard. As far as stakeholder outreach, meetings with Placer County Vittner's Association and several special interest groups have occurred between 2014 and 2020. The municipal advisory councils have heard this item again between March and May of 2015, when the item originally was coming to the commission, and then again, just this past summer, between July and September. The agricultural commission made their formal recommendation on the agricultural minimum requirement in April 2015, and then again, on the project description that went forward in May 2017. I did present the item to the agricultural commission in September of just this past year for information. And then finally, the airport land use commission was presented to and provided their support back in September of this past year as well. So I'm going to get into some key issues here. Again, this is not an exhaustive list, but this is kind of some key, these are key items that I have brought up in the staff report, and I'm going to kind of do these out of order, too. I'm going to start with food service and defining accessory use. So again, this is addressed in the staff report, but it is something that was raised because increasingly, we see that wine and beer paired with food is an important component of marketing. It helps support locally grown products if those products are in fact sourced locally and diversifies the agricultural sector. And so under today's ordinance, the service of food really is limited. It's only allowed in conjunction with a caterer. It's limited to sort of picnic-style or sort of snack-type foods, and then a food truck is allowed. The preparation and service of food, however, is not allowed, so making it to order is not allowed. And so the proposed provision is intended to provide some latitude with regard to preparation and serving. and service of food and accessory to a winery or a farm brewery. We do define accessory use in our code. It kind of, it needs to meet a three-point, three-part test. And so that test is it needs to be incidental and secondary to the primary use on the property. It has to be smaller in size as compared to the primary use, and it has to, it has to meet the definition of not changing the character of the principal use. So again, a conditional use permit allows for this through discretionary review. I'm gonna jump to event...
Nikki, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Related to that? Because you said that it would be food that would be served that is not made to order. And there's already an existing winery who is making food to order. Are they being grandfathered so they can continue to do this?
Yeah, I think the facility you're referring to is actually permitted as a community center once upon a time, and so that conditional use permit guides the service of food at that facility.
So for perpetuity, they can continue to, unless they violate in some way?
Their conditions of approval are...
But going forward, that's not gonna be allowed?
Right, yeah. I mean, since then, we've amended the portion of the code that community centers fall under to also encompass ag event centers and event, commercial event centers, and this is, you know, kind of a changing thing as far as the addition. Now, the accessory use restaurant only shows up in the winery ordinance right now. It's kind of an important distinction. It doesn't show up in other parts of the code. It's referenced in the winery ordinance. I'm gonna move to event noise at this point. So the county has considered a lot of comments pertaining to event noise and its impact on our communities. The framework for the analysis of noise is outlined in the draft EIR and in the staff report. You know, for clarification, I want to note that the EIR assumed that louder events would be associated with special events, you know, things like weddings or even a concert, whereas smaller events like a pairing dinner or a membership party for 50 people at one time would be quieter. And if there was music there, it would be, you know, background music or ambiance music and that kind of thing. So while the overarching compliance with the noise standards is always required, so there, we have a code section that drives that, in order to achieve compliance, the proposed text amendment actually incorporates mitigation for any operator that is proposing outdoor amplified music or speech as part of their events. I'm gonna read this section of the staff report. This is how that mitigation measure reads, and it will show up in the code. Prior to hosting events with amplified music or speech and weddings, an owner或operator shall submit a site plan to the Community Development Resource Agency. The site plan shall identify the proposed outdoor location of the event and the distance to the nearest residential receptor property line. If the distance between the proposed sound source and the nearest sensitive receptor property line is greater than those shown in the table, so a table will show up in our code with setbacks, then additional acoustical analysis shall not be required. But if the distance is less, then a subsequent noise analysis shall be required. So I'm reading from pages eight and nine of the staff report. Sorry, and I paraphrase the end of that measure a little bit, but you can see also table five on page nine of the staff report, which shows the types of activities and the setback that would be required. And so, interestingly, Auburn Bowman has a more restrictive noise standard, and so that's why it's distinguished between our general plan and our Auburn Bowman community plan. But you can see here, you know, the gist here is if they meet those setbacks, then outdoor amplified music would be required, would be allowed. If they don't, a noise study would be required to prove that they can meet the standards.
So Nikki, that kind of makes it all good on paper. What I see that is sorely lacking is the ability for a resident who feels that, you know, the analysis fell short because they can't open their windows at night or something like that. I still don't see any provision short of a call in Monday morning after the fact for them to try to get some assistance with that not happening. And I think that's where we're greatly falling short. And not just with regards to wineries, but with regards to our noise ordinance in general in the county. It's got no teeth.
Mm-hmm. There are two remedies for that. One lies in code compliance. The other may lie in restricting the frequency of those things. But as it's, you know, written right now, those frequencies are tied to what's allowed as ag promotional events and special events. So code compliance is where I'm headed next, although I don't know that that totally satisfies what you've said. Code compliance is another topic raised by a lot of commenters in the draft EIR and throughout the public outreach process. So at the max, you know, not only in 2015, but this past year, and a lot of comments are kind of wrapped up in that. So the staff report has a full discussion of that, and there is some staff in the room to talk about the actual process for code compliance. By and large, it is associated with wineries and tied to noise. The staff report also talks about the merits of sort of a more proactive approach. So when code-compliant staff is more actively working with neighbors and operators and educating these facilities about what the actual, what it means to be in compliance, you know, we have found that that works. You know, one approach we have talked about in the staff report is more actively monitoring these events. That could potentially include requiring or asking voluntarily for operators or these facilities to give us information about when they are holding events, how many people would be there if noise is, if amplified music is proposed, as a way to sort of evaluate, monitor, and check. So that's placed into this staff report, and that type of proposal can certainly be explored some more with direction from your commission.
Nikki, I'd like to talk about what I said back in April when we first looked at this. It's on page 2-220, and the response to my comment is on page 2-226. And it really follows what Jeff just brought up. One of my biggest concerns is that we really have a system that we're setting up where we're doing self-policing or allowing the, these operations to do self-policing on a number of events. I'm not necessarily trying to direct an issue towards their daily activities. It's the special event, the six or 10 events that they're allowed to have by right. And I'm glad to hear you say that their, the staff is considering some sort of a system on those special events, those larger events, to have a, what I would call kind of like a use permit process where they go online. It shouldn't be a real cumbersome process, and I suggested this back in April, that they go online and have the ability to, as you say, say, this is when the event's gonna happen, this is what it's for, this is the times of operation. And so then we can document it. We can also track it. It's good information as we kind of look back over the years to what's happening out there.
Yep.
And then if there's an issue, then I think we've got a better ability to nail it down. And I think Jeff, as far as code enforcement was saying, that we, our system is not working very effectively. And I had suggested back then that there be a phone line that people could call. It's always available, not necessarily to talk to a live person, but at least leave a voicemail of saying, this is happening at this particular time, so it records that incident. And so I guess I just want to say that I was a little concerned that the response to my comment was just sort of passing it off to code enforcement. Why can't this be addressed as a ordinance issue?
Wayne, is that more really discussion after we're still in the presentation?
Yeah, probably, but I did have a question because she was kind of playing that more towards code enforcement. So I wanted to kind of understand why we can't address it as an ordinance issue.
We could with some of your direction, right? And I think that's kind of what we're implying in the staff report. Okay. Okay, and then I'll touch on these last two things very briefly. So we did receive some comments about facilitating new wineries. And in particular, they address the increase in buyright allowance on 10 acres and greater. So the investment in that larger property is greater and doesn't really facilitate startups and small wineries. It costs more to enter, it's a barrier to entry. And then, you know, additionally, that a minor use permit is tied to properties on 4.6 to less than 10 acres, again, you know, with environmental review and permitting costs and so forth, a barrier there. I do want to point out, you know, I think the county will commit to retaining this winery and farm brewery task force with various disciplines from, staff from various disciplines throughout the county in order to, you know, continue to consult with and facilitate and support those that are coming in interested in starting a winery or a farm brewery.
I could have a question about that. You know, if you're somebody that's just graduating from home making to a winery, and you want it to be a business?
Yep.
And you can't really afford to meet the road standard yet and those types of things. And so I think that's what you were just addressing.
Yes.
There's a way for, in the, in these, you know, I couldn't find it, but there's a way for them to get started. How do they get, sell their product?
Right, so that's exactly what's addressed in this section of the staff report. And as I would say...
Is it in the ordinance, or...
Well, they're regulated, like, small wineries, right? And we don't have that boutique, we don't have a separate streamlined sort of path for them, but with consultation from staff, I think we try to find that for them. You know, the kind of crux is when the public comes to taste on the property, a lot of these standards kick in for safety and health. And so that's, I think, where we see some of the, some of the sort of barriers to entry for that kind of facility. But we try, we do try to work, you know, work with operators to figure out how to get them from, you're right, that home winemaker threshold just starting up is kind of a leap to make.
So would that be like a temporary permit or something like that?
You could, right? Yeah, absolutely could. If the property isn't sort of set up for public access, temporary outdoor event permits, you know, they're very limited right now. It's two days per year, not to exceed three days in a row, but those can be used to get the public onto the property.
Thank you.
Okay. And then I'll touch on this last one, ag promotional event limitations under the reduced-intensity alternative. This was just raised because, you know, Mr. Johnson, to your point, another sort of barrier to entry is this installation of the public well, and that standard, to hit that standard is also a very high one. And so the reduced-intensity alternative is actually tied to that. So it limits, what's triggering that is actually the affordance of agricultural promotional events that are unlimited. So this alternative limits those, 38 per year, and that would otherwise eliminate the requirement for a public well. So I'll jump into the correspondence that was received. We did receive quite a bit of correspondence from a number of interested parties. You can see the topics that they cover. This isn't exhaustive, but I tried to put them into sort of themes. Retaining rural character, noise, groundwater supply was raised, the allowance under the accessory use restaurants, some kind of clarification on that. Consistency or lack thereof with the agricultural event center ordinance. Access was raised in a couple of different contexts. Retaining the right to have buyright tasting on smaller acreage, non-conforming uses, and then larger-scale wineries. And so many of these items I have discussed in the staff report, they've been discussed on previous slides. Some are resolved through our development standards, some are resolved through the mitigation measures that are proposed in the draft EIR. However, some have raised questions for staff and require a determination by your commission. And so in the interest of sharing these with the commission, staff would like to touch on some of those now so that you can ask questions and include them as part of your discussion today. So first, I'd like to raise some correspondence received by the Placer County Vittner's Association related to three topics. Those comments include retaining tasting by right on 4.6 to less than 10 acres, but not necessarily extending events by right. So rather, what they're trying to say here is to preserve what is allowed today on these existing and future properties in order to foster startup operations. Now, I had mentioned a minor use permit would be required in the future. Again, what is stated here is to preserve what they're allowed today, which is buyright tasting, however, not extend events to them. Another, the second topic is related to access standards and them being too stringent. Now, these standards are set in association with the land development manual. They are public health, public safety-related measures, and there is a process through our design exception agreement process that, where the benefit of a reduced standard can be applied. So again, sort of a path forward to prove up a lesser standard. Third, providing more latitude for non-conforming uses was something that was raised in their correspondence. Now, while staff aims to work with existing operators on non-conformities for any land use through our regulatory process, we are kind of subject to our zoning code on non-conformity as well spelled out in our code as far as treating those facilities. So staff wouldn't necessarily present, the second, wouldn't necessarily support the last two items, but if the commission wants to entertain preserving what is allowed today on that smaller acreage, that poses what we believe is no effect on the SEQA analysis insofar as they retain what is already in the code today. Second, I want to raise that the county has been approached by a property owner looking to construct a large winery, so that's a facility that produces 20,000 cases or more, on a property in excess of 40 acres. This property owner wants to see our ordinance go a little bit further, and so they're looking to add provisions for additional events and additional attendees for large wineries on properties over 40 acres. As proposed, the ordinance already establishes a use permit for these types of wineries, and it creates a regulatory framework for events, which we've gone over. However, with these large facilities, it could be anticipated that they may accommodate additional attendees and additional events as opposed to smaller-scaled operations on smaller parcels. And so this property owner is looking to make some changes for large wineries on 40 acres or more, and I'll highlight them now. The first is to allow for additional attendees in excess of the currently proposed 50 people at agricultural promotional events. The second is to allow for additional attendees for special events. The third is to allow for special events in excess of 12 per year, which is currently the maximum afforded. And the fourth is to allow some additional hours of operation. I had highlighted in a slide, highlighted in the slide that the proposed ordinance currently addresses that through a use permit process. However, those first three items, staff analyzed, and in our best attempt to create latitude for this scale of a facility, determined that a conditional use permit should be required in order to protect the public interest if those are in fact accepted. A use permit provision would require additional environmental review. It would allow for disclosure of environmental effects, traffic and noise, and it would obviously create another opportunity to capture public input on that type of a project. So as such, our analysis, along with our consultant, we have determined that these potential changes wouldn't pose an effect as far as our SEQA analysis because they are tied to a conditional use permit and that subsequent review. So staff felt the need to obviously vet this internally, talk with our EIR consultant, and bring this up to your commission. And with all of the comments that have been received, we realize that there may be some merit in some changes. And our, in fact, and I'm gonna skip to our final slide here, asking you to, posing this recommendation that's in the staff report and here today, which is to certify the final EIR, adopt an ordinance to approve the zoning text amendment... EIR, adopt an ordinance to approve the zoning tax amendment, though we know you may have more questions about some of these other things that have been raised. So you can see that recommendation up here. And, you know, I'll kind of pose forward a couple of options, and EJ may want to speak to these a little bit more. But one option is obviously to proceed with the language as written and with the recommendation that's up on the screen. Or if your commission would, should choose to entertain some of the suggested changes, we, you know, we may ask that you send staff back to look at those a little further.
Questions?
Thank you. On the larger facilities, if somebody had 40, 50, 100 acres or what have you, zoned properly by right, they could open a 10-acre facility, a 10-acre winery?
So, sorry. What's the scenario again?
If you had a larger piece of property, 50 acres, 100 acres, whatever, and you wanted to open a 10-acre, 10 acres of that as a winery, that would be allowed by right, correct?
Depending on your zone district.
Depending, zoned properly, it would be allowed by right.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, is it a large winery or a small winery? Our winery ordinance distinguishes large and small at the 20,000 case mark.
I think either would apply to where I'm going with it.
So by right, you could do it by right for smaller, so 20,000 cases, but 20,000 cases and over, you would always need a use permit for that?
Would always need a use permit. But then I could go on my next 10 acres on my 100-acre parcel and open winery B, small winery by right again, and basically do that multiple times to the point where I am now a large winery operator, but because they operate, has four separate businesses, I would avoid the conditional use permit process totally.
In theory.
So you could, yeah, there is a potential for one winery operator to construct a winery on a property, and then another one comes in, right, adjacent, and they're afforded the same allowances that same winery is. So if you're looking at, could there be multiple wineries on adjacent properties?
Even on the same property?
Well, on the same property, I mean, we're talking something different. It's just that you're talking about ownership.
But it could be ownership of the property, but the wineries could be separate entity. And I guess what I'm getting at is there needs to be, I think, a provision for a larger operator to come in and still have the ability to do some sort of by right so that we don't get these kind of games played to avoid the process. So that all the cards can come on the table out front, and we get better, more thoroughly thought out projects as opposed to somebody just trying to skirt the ordinance.
Yeah, I don't think our ordinance that's proposed today anticipated multiple wineries on the same property.
And it doesn't prevent it either.
And not anticipate...
Anyway, that's my concern there is that I think that there needs to be, be something by right entitled to a larger operation. You know, like I say, so that the temptation and the desire to play games goes away.
Any other questions of Nikki or the staff? And we need discussion, but I think let's get through the process before we have a discussion. Any other questions of Nikki? I have a question.
Sure.
A number of comments came in the last 48 hours dealing with the environmental document. Have you addressed those, and does the final EIR address those comments?
We believe so, yeah. So the correspondent slide that I had up previously captures sort of overarching themes from what we recently received, or our response to comments does capture that.
All right. All right. Any other questions of staff? All right. Then I think the next piece is, we don't have an applicant here, so the next piece is to open up to public comment. I would suggest just a five-minute break for everyone before we start public comment. And EJ and Clayton, did you want to do a sign-up list or just take persons as they arrive?
I think we do have a sign-up list, if I'm not mistaken. So there is a sign-up list over on the table. So if you haven't already signed up for public comment, you may want to do so now. And then when the, you know, commission is ready to open up public comment, we can
Okay, so we'll begin...
We can start reading names off that list, three at a time.
So we'll begin right around 11:22. Sue, are you ready? Sue? All right. Oh, yeah. All right. Let's bring the meeting back to order. It's time for public comment on the proposed ordinance changes. I believe there's a list, and so, EJ, will you be reading from the list and having persons come up?
I believe...
Of Kara Conklin will be reading those names as soon as you're ready.
All right. I believe everyone has a three-minute time limit. How many, when does the yellow light go on, Sue? With a minute to go, the yellow light comes on on the desktop. Please wrap up your comments at that point in time. And when the red light comes on, your time is over. So Kara?
Good morning.
Morning.
Thanks to the commissioners for their time on this rather trying issue this morning.
And this goes for everyone, actually. Could you just please state your name?
I'm Stuart Perry, and I'm the owner of Fawn Ridge Winery out here off Highway 49 here in Auburn. In the interest of time, I'm not going to comment on everything. For me, as a small business operator in a small winery, I can't tell you how important the grandfathering clause would be to me. Some of the discussion amongst the commission already this morning kind of delved into the challenges that a small operator might have if indeed they were called upon to pursue some of the regulatory requirements that may occur below that 10-acre minimum by right. So, and I am a member of the PCBA, and we did discuss, you know, where are we with the written stipulations in this ordinance? So for me, I'd like to see some real structured way in which accommodation might be accomplished. We've been operating for 15 years in good faith. I invite all of you to talk to others in the community. Fawn Ridge is one of the premier wineries in the region. We went with a lot of awards. We support a lot of nonprofits, including the Sheriff's Department, and I can list all of them. Unfortunately, a lot of these people can't make it during the day when the hearing occurs. But I did want to say that we don't do weddings, we don't do concerts. How would it be possible for a small winery to be approved in order to operate a tasting room and to continue to entertain guests at a level much lower than what might be stipulated? There's been a lot of discussion around tendency and assumptions. I think the numbers are the highest they probably could be. So I'm just advocating that we take a real firm look and stipulate and codify elements of the grandfathering, so, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Stuart, if I...
Yeah.
Okay, one thing I'm puzzled over is most of the wineries already have a minor use permit?
Yes.
And so that continues, is that correct?
Well, that would be my understanding. I think the...
Unless you make a major change to your operations.
Major change, but we're not quite clear what major change may involve, so...
At least as I'm reading, between 4.6 and 10 acres?
Yes.
Is a minor use permit?
Yes.
And above that is by right?
Yes.
So, I guess, what changes here? I'm confused because most of these wineries so far have already gone through the minor use permit process.
Well, the original minor use permit didn't address such things as events, okay? So where are we with the ability to continue to operate? So where are we with the ability to continue to operate as we have in good faith over the years without complaints? I don't think there have been founded complaints against my business. So can I continue to operate where I'm operating at, at that level, without needing to follow along with the stipulations of this new ordinance? So, in all honesty, my opinion is the county didn't quite know what to do with wineries originally. They didn't really know how to define what is an event. And so as Nikki may have talked about, we had a series of ongoing conversations over the years trying to grapple with what is an event and what is too many people or a minimum number of people and so on. So that's just my concern. Yes, I do have a permit, but it may not stipulate all of the ramifications involved in operating a small winery.
So I think I hear you saying that as far as grandfathering, you'd like to be able to operate as you have before?
Yes. I've been given a business license for 15. This is our 16th year, so. I think if I've been given a business license, I ought to be able to continue to operate as a business, so.
Okay. So maybe that's a question we can ask as.
Yeah. So, I mean, if I had to advocate, it would be for allowing a business to continue as it has operated faithfully and legally over the years on a basis of being issued a business license, so.
Okay.
If I don't operate correctly, take my business license away.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
What would happen if you were to want to expand? Maybe lease a piece of ground next door from your neighbor?
Well, I can tell you, there's two properties right next to me that I love to have the ability to buy. That would make me 10 acres, right? And all this goes out the window. I don't have that kind of. Will you loan that to me, Larry? I don't have that kind of money. I'd love to. I'd love to, but.
Take up a collection.
Yeah. Go fund me, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clayton or EJ, is that an answer that you can provide today regarding existing uses, or is that something you want to discuss at the end of the public comment?
I can do either one, whatever.
It'd probably be good now. It's relevant.
Sure. So there is currently a ordinance, a currently statute in the county code for non-conforming uses. And that basically says that if you have a valid non-conforming use and that use is not enlarged or increased, then you are allowed to continue that use. So that gets transferred over into the winery ordinance as well. As long as you have a legal conforming use as of today, you are allowed to continue to use that going forward. If you want to increase that use, then you become subject to the new ordinance.
Okay.
So there is an existing section on it, and it talks about it. It does identify it as uses that are enlarged or increased, so.
Okay. Thank you. Next.
Good morning. My name is Marilyn Jasper, Public Interest Coalition. First, we urge that this matter be postponed and continued to a later date. The public needs more time to read and research both EIRs and the staff report. Second, we support ag operations that comply with county codes, which include wineries and breweries, but we do not support a zoning text amendment that deliberately circumvents the county's agricultural event center ordinance. The NOP stated that the project location is, quote, "the unincorporated portions of Placer County." With that understanding, the public acting in good faith submitted NOP comments to identify significant impacts for a countywide EIR scope of review. Didn't happen. The ZTA language itself, which some of you have brought up, a model of causes and effects, exacerbates environmental impacts, which in turn triggers a SEQA analysis for the entire county. Again, didn't happen. Example, SEQA clearly defines project as, quote, "the whole of an action" and requires review of all reasonably foreseeable environmental impacts. Instead, this EIR arbitrarily truncated the project's scope of review to a, quote, "vicinity or vicinity of existing facilities." We find no SEQA ruling that allows an agency to propose a contentious countywide ordinance and then cherry pick the existing vicinity or subregion to limit or curtail its mandated review of all significant environmental impacts. Even today's agenda, under location, it says countywide. Under community plan areas, it says all. Major problems must be resolved with both the EIR and the loophole-laden ZTA, and it's also reflected in three grand jury reports. And some of your questions have indicated that you may see some problems. We urge you to stop or pause this project so that the public has time to review, and maybe we can all agree on some mitigated measures and some alternatives. It's easier to loosen a ZTA later than to tighten it later. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning. My name's Tyler Kraft. I live on Fawn Ridge, so I'm just here to support Stu and Stephanie, the owners of Fawn Ridge Winery. Over the four years I've lived there, they've always been really great neighbors and really respectful and courteous, you know? I think it just comes down to respect and knowing your neighbors and knowing when you have small events or whatever. Or we have our road meetings there, kind of softens the blow sometimes when we're trying to get things fixed. But I just, I see how they run their business and how they go through the county permits and stuff like that. I'd love to see, I think we'd all like to see, small businesses have a better ability to get things done through the county so they're on the up and up and they can continue to run as they are. And it sounds like with the grandfather kind of clause, they're going to be able to perhaps mitigate something that they don't have to worry about. So just wanted to speak on their part. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next up, Mark Brown, Jim Bob Kaufman, and Brian Suer.
Hi, I'm Mark Brown. I moved here a little under two years ago from Napa County. I worked in wine in Napa County for quite a few stellar vineyards and wineries. My wife and I are interested in planning a vineyard and starting a winery up on Mount Vernon Road where we live. Our parcel size is 4.7 acres, so as my understanding, we'd be kind of in the small winery category. I'm concerned about a number of things in this. Boutique wineries are being removed from this definition. There's also a requirement for one acre planted or sourced locally. We've identified approximately one acre of our property that is suitable for vines. The rest we want to leave open. And that, this sort of ties my hands to say I've got to buy grapes from here in Placer County, which quite frankly, I'm not interested in. I have connections to vineyards in Napa, Sonoma, Mendocino, El Dorado, and Contra Costa County that I'm interested in purchasing very small, unique varieties of grapes that aren't grown here. By the presentation up here, there's under 300 acres planted in all of Placer County, so that really will drive up prices on grapes, pushing people like me out. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner. My name's Jim Bob Kaufman. I'm from Kaufman Architects, and I'm in the business of designing wineries, starting with a few here in Placer County. I have a couple of comments for you. I'll try to be brief. The first is on Table 1, which is the parcel sizes and the type of entitlements that would be required for those sizes. And specifically, under the residential, the RA and the RF category, it shows that anything 10 acres or more would need a minor use permit. In the interest of preserving farmland, keeping open space, particularly in our residential areas and in those zones, I would ask you to consider looking at properties of 40 acres or more or 50 acres or more and having those be a by right entitlement. Again, in the interest of keeping that open space, promoting agriculture in the more dense, more dense areas. The second thing is regarding the restaurants. As you probably all know, food and wine go together very well, and part of having a successful winery and marketing your product is creating an experience for wine tasters and agritourists together. And the addition of a restaurant, I think, I think the word restaurant is a little misleading because it isn't a place where you could go and have breakfast at any time of the day or dinner late into the night. It's a, it's a place that's conditioned by the hours of the winery, and it's intended to be an accessory use to the winery and would be very important for winemakers and winery owners to have that, have the capability to provide food to people who are going to a winery for an experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Kara, who was next?
Brian. I think it's S-E-U-R. Suer? Brian? All right. David Brockman and Scott Arfston and Kerry Hazen.
Good morning, members of the Planning Commission. My name is David Brockman. I'm the current president of the Placer County, Placer County Vintners Association, also referred to as PCVA. Placer County Vintners Association was established in 2010 as a 501(c)(6) nonprofit trade association, and it represents 20 established commercial wineries in Placer County. First of all, I'd like to take a moment to thank the constructive efforts by Nikki Strigan and the county planning staff on taking on the important issue of this update, as well as the efforts on the extensive EIR. The effort underscores the growth and maturity of the industry in Placer County, and we appreciate Placer County's acknowledgement of our industry's contributions to the county's economic growth and its recognition of the value we add to Placer County's quality of life. In regards to the proposed text amendment, PCVA supports the proposed changes with regard to agricultural promotional and special events and the increased crop production from one acre to two acres of grapes in the ag requirement. We also support the restaurant classification as an accessory use, but would like to encourage the county to work with the industry in the future toward a more workable or mid-level of onsite food service that falls somewhere between the expensive hired catering and a full commercial kitchen. We do have several concerns. Some have been mentioned already. Number one, changes in by right tasting on properties 4.6 to 10 acres, access standards of existing wineries, and the treatment of existing wineries of grandfathering. Some of our most well-known and highly regarded wineries, such as Fawn Ridge, Pizzah, Cristaldi, and Lone Buffalo, for example, started in just such a way on less than 10 acres and would likely not exist today had they not been able to start small and grow into their current operations. The farm zone by right is for farming, and farming is an inherently commercial endeavor. In regards to the access standards, many wineries will be faced with the near impossible task of meeting all of the access standard requirements after the fact in terms of existing wineries. PCA is advised that the Placer County access standards seem more stringent than California's statewide standards. We ask that planning staff could further engage with the association on this issue to create flexible solutions. Finally, grandfathering in the current amendment is vague, and it offers little to no protection for the existing wineries from our point of view. It appears the county could hold an existing winery to any standard it wanted despite promises to codify previous existing uses. We simply seek language that offers some real protection to the existing wineries and provides a viable path forward to achieve a conforming status. In closing, it is our sincere hope that the specific concerns and requests mentioned above will be taken into serious consideration and addressed with maximum flexibility, especially for our existing wineries. It is through the trials and experiences of these wineries over the last 15 to 20 years that has enabled us, this collaborative effort, to give rise to the current text amendment now under consideration. Our aim is to ensure that our industry continues to grow in the same organic way as in the past, fostering both smaller and larger operations and allowing for flexibility in development standards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello there. My name is Scott Arfston, and I am a new winery. I'd like to propose a new winery, so I bought a five-acre lot. And the only question I have is similar to the gentleman here. I want to start with one acre, and I want to buy grapes, some of the best grapes I can get, so I can have the finest wine around. Hopefully we have it together, right? And actually, he and I represent 10% of the total market of wineries based on a, what is 17 or 19? So starting the small guy, or gal, or woman, or, you know, family is really what it's all about, because Placer County is not a big business, you know, Amazon, HP, all that stuff, businesses leaving California. So this kind of thing where the small person could start is really critical. So having the ability to buy grapes elsewhere is really my, my point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Kerry Hazen, and I'm here as a Placer County resident for the last 32 years. We lived in Auburn for 25 years, raised our kids. I taught school, still working, and I also own Rancho Robal Winery in Lincoln. First of all, I want to speak as a resident. We lived above Mount Vernon when we bought the Placer County area. We looked everywhere, and we just decided we loved this area. We loved, we didn't know about the wineries, we didn't know about the breweries, but our deck overlooked Placer, Mount Vernon winery. Sorry, I'm nervous. And we just loved listening to the music. We never had an issue with noise, and even today, that's one of our favorite things to participate in and hear. So I think you hear a lot of negatives about the noise, but there's something just beautiful about it as well. And secondly, we do live on 20 acres right now, and I hear cannon shots half the time in our past. I have animals that make a lot of noise, and I have neighbors that the cows and the horses bring in a heck of a lot of flies into my house. And I think the gentleman that said, like Kenny Chesney says, we just all have to get along and respect one another. And your idea of having a phone call, a place that you can call, I think is a good one to think, consider and think about, because if somebody is, we've had zero complaints. If somebody is upset, when we lived in West Roseville, we moved there for two years, had to get back to the country, we had more noise than I'd ever experienced in rural Placer County. We lived in an area that had an event center, and we were always hearing noise. So that's number one. Number two, there has been public notification. We do, as the winery and breweries, we're submitting petitions to you. We are talking with all of our customers. We have thousands of people in support of this. Thirdly, I wanted to bring up that the issue on the smaller wineries is very important. I'd like to pass this over to you to take a look at. This is the Sacramento Magazine.
Hey, that goes to Sue.
And it shows boutique, it shows boutique wineries such as Pizzah that is on the cover of this last year's Sacramento Magazine. People are not coming here for these huge 40-acre, huge wineries. They're coming here because of the lifestyle my husband and I chose when we wanted to raise our kids here. They love going to a small tasting room, getting to know the owners. And I will tell you, going back, the last thing is, you guys are still putting so much regulation to small business owners. In two years of owning a winery, please come out and spend some time with me. The amount of work that we have to do is insane. We are not all wealthy people. We are people that are doing this because we love Placer County, and without wineries such as Pizzah, Fawn Ridge, Lone Buffalo, who are all noted in there, people wouldn't be coming here for that. And consider the people that you're serving. Consider the whole Placer County residents and the petitions and goodness that you see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori Lewis, Phil Mattis, and Jim Hagan Smith.
Good morning, commissioners. I go before you again. I've been coming here since 2008, and there's been no changes. I'm just to summarize my written rebuttal regarding this draft environmental impact report. First off, Lori Lewis, Wise in Gold Hill. The noise that, first of all, I'm a layperson reading this environmental draft, so I read it for how I take it. It's black and white. What the words say is how I interpret it. When she, when the county did the environmental impact report, they talk about noise. Well, that can't be mitigated away because it's without merit. There's been three grand jury investigations regarding the lack of enforcement, and they haven't mitigated it away since. My first concern when reading this DIER is the lack of addressing the issue of domestic well water and. well water and manufacturing beer and wine. And here's a quote, "As to the water that the vintners use in their wineries, research shows that two to six gallons of water is used for every gallon of wine made. Much of that water is used for the purposes of cleaning hoses, oak barrels, fermentation tanks, and the like. My source is the Sacramento B. Food Drink and Wine in 2014. Please keep in mind that I live near four wineries and three breweries, and we are all on domestic well." Now, as far as the farm brewery, the water consumption for making beer is seven gallons of water to produce one gallon of beer. The ratio can go as high as 10 gallons of water to make one gallon of beer. Beer is 90 to 95% water. Currently, domestic well water is being used for that purpose. This does not include water used in the tasting rooms or when events or weddings are occurring. This source is the Growler, the thirsty business of beer, 2016. I didn't make this up. For a small brewery producing 1,500 barrels of beer, each barrel holds 31.5 gallons of beer. In producing that 1,500 gallon of beer a year, 47,250 gallons domestic well water. One winery, I mean, excuse me, one brewery, one year. I've got three in my neighborhood. That sequoia says that a report minimizes the impact by limiting the degree or magnitude of the action of the implementation. It also states that it compensates for the impact by replacing or providing substitute resources for the environment. Does that mean the county is going to refill my well when it goes dry? My other major concern throughout this whole document I read, and this ZTA does not commit Placer County to a particular course of action. Now, do you think that solved my fear that they're going to take, fix my well when it goes dry? Give me my value land when my house is no longer salable because I have no more water? I have so much more. But this environmental impact report is inadequate. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm Phil Maddox. I'm the owner winemaker at Lone Buffalo Vineyards. First of all, I would want to join what David Brockman said. We certainly commend the county for the effort that they have made in getting us to where we are. I think they've recognized that the winery industry is a viable industry in Sonoma County, or in, excuse me, in Placer County. I used to live in Sonoma County. And I'd also like to commend the county for going to the time, expense, and effort to do a EIR on the, on the whole winery ordinance. I think it shows that they recognize that we are a viable and valuable addition to Placer County. I want to address two issues, and you've heard something about either one, both of them today. The first is the changes in tasting in the farm zone from parcels to 4.6 to 10 acres. It used to be by right, under the current ordinance, they want now to have an MUP. This is going to greatly inhibit the start, the ability for small wineries to start up. In the staff report, on page 11, the staff states that, that this increase is fine because there are plenty of 10-plus acres parcels available in the county. This doesn't recognize that most startups start up on property where the owner already resides. And it would require somebody that wanted to start a winery that had four to six, 4.6 to 10 acres, to go out and find another parcel and buy it, adding to the cost, not to mention what has to be done once you go through the MUP. This quite frankly would have prevented Lone Buffalo from being where we are today. The other thing is the treatment of the existing wineries. The two problems that I see that are proposed in the existing proposed language, which is in section F of the draft zoning text amendments. The first is, it is very vague. What does, shall be allowed in accordance with current development standards as determined by the county mean? Sounds like the county can impose any standards on the existing wineries it wants. Secondly, with regard to any improvements or upgrades, it says the project would be reviewed under the provisions of the current ordinance, i.e., any upgrades will result in having to bring the whole operation into compliance with, with current standards. There are three possible results from this, none of them good. Upgrades will be discouraged. Some people will be tempted to operate illegally, and some wineries will go out of business. None of those things are good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Let me see, I have a sheet here that says you currently have an MUP.
I believe we do, yes.
Okay. And so I guess what I'm a little puzzled about, you know, if you have 4.6 acres to 10 acres, there's a requirement here that you get a finer use permit. But you've done that. And so I guess I'm struggling with what's the problem.
Well, the problem with it is that the time that we did it, there were, we were not required to do an environmental impact report. We were not required to, that was the main thing. I mean, we never went through that procedure, and it is a costly procedure. And I'm not necessarily speaking for myself. I'm speaking for the startup wineries when I talk about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question also for you. I'm sorry to let you get away. I'm curious, those of you that are growing grapes with well water, and I think probably the majority of you are, is there any loss ratio? Now, there was, if every gallon of water you pump out of the aquifer, how much of it is used for the growing of the grapes, and how much of it's evaporated, and how much goes back into the soil and is recaptured? Do you have any information on that?
I don't particularly on that, but I certainly would say, as far as Lone Buffalo is concerned, and I think a lot of wineries will tell you this, we dry farm our vineyard. We do not use a lot of water. I think the idea that a lot of water is used for wineries may be true on a statewide basis, but it's certainly not true of every winery. And I think you'll find, certainly if you look at most European vineyards are dry-farmed, wire is not necessarily a friend of grape wine.
Makes more of it.
But not as high a quality. Okay?
All right. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jim Hogginsmit. First of all, I'd like to thank staff for putting a lot of effort into this. The general looks pretty good. Couple talks I'd like to quickly address. The wineries in Placer County are helping to prevent the progression of urban sprawl. We can't forget that. You know, as long as people can continue to farm, whether it be cattle, or grapes, or citrus, or whatever, that's preventing urban sprawl. So I think we need to do everything we can to continue to enable the wineries to be able to succeed. And so into that, 4.6 acre minimums, I think grandfather or allowing 4.6 with less restrictions on some of the permitting is, makes a bit of sense. And then on to food production, or providing food to guests, the wineries. I think there is also some room between that full-blown restaurant and just packaged foods. I know when I go to a winery, I'm, you know, typically not looking to sit down to eat a lunch, but having a little snack might be good, and, and just what's in the pack. What they're allowed at that low level with the packaged food, I don't think is quite good enough. So some allowance for additional food that doesn't require a full commercial kitchen. And then lastly, grandfathering in the existing wineries that I'm thinking that language maybe needs a little bit better there, given, you know, the permitting that many of the wineries went through initially maybe doesn't meet current requirements, but, you know, it looks like they're doing a pretty good job, and we don't want to run them out of business. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Karen?
All right, next up, Jocelyn Maddox, Keith Nesbit, Tina Wilkins, and Chad Roberts.
Good, I think it's afternoon now, or just? Commissioners, I am Jocelyn Maddox. A few of you know me, some of you don't, and some of you knew me in one role in particular, but I wear a lot of other hats related to what we're talking about today. So my family is Lone Buffalo Vineyards. I'm not an owner, however. I own a small marketing company. I produce the Placer County Wine and Ale Trail Guide. I am now making a living out of promoting our local wine and craft brew industry. I sit on the board of the Placer County Vintners Association, and I also sit on the board of the Placer Visitors Bureau. And I'm part of the Government and Affairs Committee for the Auburn Chamber of Commerce. I am speaking kind of on behalf of those hats today. Some of our industry supporters were not able to be here today because coincidentally, the Placer At The Grounds Large Event Center that Placer County is supporting had their grand opening at the same time as this hearing today. So I'm speaking from an economic development and tourism impact for the, for the industry. So as a, as a result of tourism and marketing part of the industry, oh, I did want to clarify that the size of most of our wineries are less than 10,000 cases. I think we have two that are hovering around 10,000. The rest are 3,000, 2,000, or 500 cases. So we have been developing on this very small level, and I think that's where the Placer County Vintners Association's letter spoke to wanting to continue to be able to grow in that manner. As far as the economic impact of the industry, at a recent Farm Bureau meeting, the ag commissioner reported that the county has undertaken a study to determine the value of an economic impact of not only crops in Placer County, but value-added products that result from those crops, wine, for example. According to the report, which we'll see due out in the next month or so, $1.5 million in wine grape production that we currently have in Placer County actually translates to over $17 million in economic activity. This includes not only crop production, but finished wine, as we call it in the industry, and jobs. Placer's 20 or so small wineries contribute to a total of over 2,000 ag-related jobs in Placer County, proving that wine is worth more than just the grape on the vine. Even more impressive is our craft beer industry. It's estimated to be worth over $145 million in Placer County, and after all, we are talking about our burgeoning farm breweries today as well. They contribute to at least 10% of that revenue. Special events, one of the very things at issue today, generate over 50% of the marketing budget for the Vintners Association and produce an average of $40,000 to $50,000 in wine sales in one weekend to attract 40% new visitors each event. More proof that the trail is an asset to tourism and economic development in Placer County. The wine trail started 15 to 20 years ago with four or five pioneering and passionate wineries trying to figure it out as they went. We now have over 20 with more in the pipeline over the next few years. Let's keep this economic growth in the farm zone going strong so that we continue, so we can continue to preserve Placer County's agricultural roots and so that farmland can continue to be farmed and not sold off for housing, or worse, become fallow.
Can you wrap it up?
Yes. That, that's pretty much it. I had a few more things to say, but I think that's the gist. And I would like to clarify that, although I think my dad didn't really remember this when you asked the question, the MUP, Rich, was, so Lone Buffalo started on a different property than it is situated now. So it started on a smaller parcel with an MUP, and when the operation moved to a larger parcel, which is 12 acres, still small, it was under the 2008 ordinance.
Thank you, counsel.
Hi, my name is Tina Wilkins. I own Vina Castellano Winery at 4590 Bell Road in, here in North Auburn. I wanted to just read kind of the idea of what was going on when they decided to do, redo the ordinance and the policy focus of it. So the policy focus of the proposed zoning text amendment is to preserve and protect farmland while also enhancing the economic viability of Placer County's agricultural operations and supporting the tenants of agrotourism, which is the type of tourism that brings visitors directly to a farm or ranch. The zoning text amendment is intended to balance the needs of various stakeholder groups and support the core principle that the primary use of the property is to cultivate and process agriculture in order to make a locally grown and value-added product. What that doesn't cover is that in order for that to happen, you have to be able to make a living and pay all of your bills, and you also need to be able to make a bit of a profit because, as with any business, but particularly in farming, there's improvements that have to be made year after year. So the reality of farming today in Placer County is that ag tourism is a huge part of it. And in order for us to continue to operate as we are, but to actually thrive, we have to have the things that are, that we're actually doing, but that we're asking to be codified with this, with these changes in the ordinance. Some of the concerns about the grandfathering issue, and I know, Rich, you're saying, well, all of you have minor use permits, but, but we're, we're concerned not just with what we're doing right now, but our ability to grow our businesses so that we actually can all become economically more viable. So for instance, I'll use myself as an example. I want to add a bathroom. I want to, I want to make an improvement to my bathroom. I have other things that I want to do on my ranch. If I were to have to bring everything up to this standard, I would go out of business. And I will argue, and I'm not doing this to pat myself on the back, but I'm one of the best winemakers and have one of the most, one of the most popular wineries on the trail, and certainly one of the oldest. So we're telling you what we need to thrive and to help agriculture, not just the wineries and the breweries, which have added a little spike to agriculture, but to help all of the small agricultural businesses that are coming up finally to succeed. And ag tourism is a big part of us. You need to give us what we're asking for if you want ag to survive in Placer County. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's, no clapping, please. Next?
Keith Nesbit, Chad Roberts.
All right.
He's not deleted, but he just wanted, he's staff from the Auburn Chamber of Commerce, and he wanted to say he supports the letter that was committed by the Vintners Association.
Good morning, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Chad Roberts, head for law on behalf of Mike Fournier and B.E.M. Inc. We are the future large winery applicant that Nikki mentioned in her presentation. And you'll see that Sue right now is passing out some requested clarifications we have, as well as some suggestions on the ordinance that we think will further the project objectives. Before I get into those, I wanted to just say, we want to thank and compliment staff for all their hard work on this ordinance. We think it does a great job of promoting the tenants of agrotourism in Placer County. So thank you. Does everyone have, so I would just run through these one by one. Our first comment is on the definition of ag promotional events. We're seeking some clarification here. Two of these types of events, I think Nikki already clarified, staff would interpret as being part of this definition. But we're wondering about, let's say that a faculty group at William Jessup or the board of the local CER club chapter want to have an off-site meeting, and they want to do it at a winery. We would certainly argue that such a meeting would promote the tenants of agrotourism in Placer County, that it would, you know, promote the sale and recognizability of that winery's product. product. And we'd also say that in Further General Plan Policy 7C3, which I'm going to read here, "The county shall permit a wide variety of promotional and marketing activities for county-grown products in all zone district where ag uses are authorized." So for these and other reasons, we think these events would clearly meet the definition, but we'd really like some clarification from staff on whether or not we're right there. Feel free to jump in if you'd like. With respect to the second revision you see there and tasting room patrons, I think that was actually already cleared up by Commissioner Moss and Nikki that that is what was intended, so we think that would be a helpful clarification in this definition as well as in the definition of special events. With respect to Section D3A on wine and beer sales, our intention in requesting this change is to clarify that a future public discretionary approval process subject to environmental review ought to determine the details of an accessory used restaurant and not necessarily whatever this ordinance says about a tasting room. We think they're different. Next item, D4, we've added the word onsite with respect to ag promotional and special events. Our clarification here is we want to know, are the special events and ag promotional events limited at taking place just in the tasting room, or could they happen elsewhere onsite? If a winery has a wine cave, can you hold an event there? Our comments on Section D4A, Table 3, and E3A are all related, and Nikki brought this up during her presentation. We appreciate it. And as we see this, the draft ordinance does a great job, but we think it's geared towards smaller wineries. And so with this requested change, we're seeking additional flexibility for large wineries on substantial acreage, subject, of course, to that future public discretionary approval process subject to CEQA that I mentioned earlier. And what we're really talking about here is, you know, we think the impacts associated with an ag promotional event with 50 people on a 10-acre winery are much different than that same event taking place on, let's say, an 80-acre winery. And we think that this ordinance ought to be flexible enough to accommodate that type of difference. I'll wrap it up right here. This is a minor comment, but there are some parking standards included in the ordinance, and our recommendation would be to simply defer to the county's parking design ordinance because we see some conflict here, and we think that that ordinance ought to prevail rather than having it in two different places. So we respectfully ask that you consider our changes, perhaps direct staff to take a further look at them, and we thank you very much for your consideration this morning.
Thank you. Nikki, are there others? I'm not Nikki, I'm sorry, Kara. Okay. If there is no one else, then we'll close the public hearing. Oh, come on, I'm sorry, come on up, please.
I'll be brief. My name's Nancy Jo Rixey. I was the previous ag marketing director here in Placer County. I am amazed that you guys are still torturing these small wineries. I really think that you need to take a look at them, the original ones, and give them some kind of tiered ability to do what they need to do to bring their wineries to profitability. I'm not sure that the, some of the things that you're requiring them to do under the couple of acts that you have going, which I won't mention, are the right way of doing it, but I think maybe taking a look at this core group of wineries that you've been just throwing through the wringer really need to be looked at, maybe looking at a tiered improvement program for them if they want to do it like you're doing for the events. Also, in the noise ordinance, I came and spoke about four months ago about the noise ordinance, and it continues to come up. And I really think that you should take a look at our noise ordinance that was developed in 2004 and bring it up to standards including events. Right now, it's based mostly on motorboats. So I think that that would help a lot, especially with the events at the wineries, the events at social things, any events that come up. Thank you.
Thank you. Ford?
Yes.
Actually, you've already...
I left about a minute on the clock earlier. I just wanted to address the question you had earlier about water usage. Most irrigation is done through Nevada Irrigation District. We're not pumping water from the ground.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Don't see any. All right. Now we'll close the public hearing portion of this and bring it back to the commission. First of all, the commission have questions of staff? Actually, I have one of the staff. Comments coming up today? Are there any comments that have arisen today that have not been addressed in the environmental documentation?
As far as adequacy of the document, the environmental impact report...
That is correct.
I would say no, no. I mean, it sounds like there's a lot of clarifications that are being asked, but the environmental document...
I would just add, there have been a few comments on different topics. If the commission is interested in kind of looking in depth at some more than others, I would suggest that maybe you have staff go back and make sure there is an evaluation to make sure everything's covered, especially since there is the potential for recirculation if there is a substantial change to things.
Okay.
And we'd want to make sure that either we are recirculating or we're not making significant changes that would require recirculation.
Okay, so we'll go through commission discussion and then kind of come to that conclusion at the end of discussion. So let's start. Commission discussion? Jeff?
Well, a few concerns going down, and some of these I've raised in the past. With regards to access rights and permission from neighbors and so on and so forth, I think this puts the county in the horrible position of making a determination on what would typically be a civil matter of whether one neighbor has right to access their own property and bring additional traffic down. And I think it's opening a can of worms that the county should have zero involvement in. It's just, it's no place for us to be sticking our nose. Second of all, again, we talked about the larger operations. If we've got kind of under 300 acres in production now, the quickest way to see that number grow and grow in a sustainable fashion is to see larger parcels that are dedicated for this and not, and I don't mean to be offensive to the smaller operations, but not a supplement to their residential property that will make Placer County much more of a destination from further away and then give additional exposure to the smaller wineries as people realize there's more to what's going on here than they found out about. So would like to see some, I guess we should say ministerial rights given to some larger facility operations as a potential attractant as opposed to having everything have to go under the microscope for a CUP or some other discretionary permit. I think on the larger properties, they can be more self-contained, they can maintain greater distances from neighbors and stuff that should make it an easier thing to grant. The 10 o'clock start time, if we're looking at hosting corporate retreats or something like that, it may be a full workday that you would like your guests to be there. So being able to start, any other portion of the farming operation can start much earlier than 10:00 AM. I don't know if it needs to be limited to indoor or something, but there should be a potential for business to start at an earlier hour also. Two more things here real quick. To me, when we get into defining events and limiting them, we're tying our hands and kind of being short-sighted. An event should be an event. It may be greater than 50 people or less than 50 people, but the county has no ability to monitor whether it's a birthday party, a wedding, or a funeral, or whatever. It's just an event, and we should simplify that again to make enforcement not such an impossible task. And that is my last thing, is as we look at expanding these uses and encouraging their growth, we need to do something with code enforcement to put some teeth there. Calling in on Monday morning when you have a problem on Friday night is not a solution. And so there needs to be something, I don't know what that solution is, but there needs to be something to give some teeth and enforceability to the ordinance other than a string of nasty letters.
Thank you, Chair.
Other comments?
Yeah, I guess there were a couple comments about buying grapes outside the county. And at least in the past, and this is for staff, I guess my understanding in reading the ordinance is as long as you have two acres, if you need more grapes, you can go to some other sources to get grapes, no matter where they're at. Is that correct?
That's correct, and that's relatively normal practice also to source from other locations, but two acres minimum required by our ag commission, beyond that, you can source from wherever you would like.
Okay, so that answers that question. Let me see, we heard a lot about the onerous minor use permit and how now it would be different than previously considered. So maybe you go through a little bit what, about the minor use permit that would be required between 4.6 and 10 acres? What is the process there? You know, how normally complex is that?
So I'll just kind of back up a little, the sort of genesis of where the 10-acre minimum came from was tied to the event allowance by right. So that was the thinking there from staff. More is afforded to these properties. It's best buffered on bigger properties as far as noise and, you know, whatever infrastructure improvements might be required to accommodate these events. So a minor use permit process, we have that entitlement in place for a lot of land uses here in the county, and it would, this would be no different. So those are permits that are subject to environmental review. That's certainly one component. They may not necessarily be exempt, but subject to environmental review as far as evaluating traffic or noise, depending on what is described in that particular project. They would be heard by our zoning administrator. They are discretionary, they are public, and so forth. So certainly a different or a departure from what's allowed today, which is by right, where someone would come to our front counter and pull a building permit and a business license and meet development standards that are in the code. By and large, how that minor use permit is conditioned isn't going to differ that much unless their project description is, you know, depending on their project description, but it would go through that sort of normal discretionary process.
Yeah, kind of, what's the basis for requiring that for, between 4.6 and 10 acres?
The basis for that is, so today, the minimum parcel size is 4.6 acres where you can have a winery. So that's a good sort of bottom. The ceiling, you know, was, I don't want to say it's arbitrary, I mean, we looked at land that was available, so 10-acre properties that were available, and if there was sufficient land to further expand the winery use and farm brewery use throughout the county. It's also a very common sort of parcel size minimum, right? That threshold, that 4.6 farm zoning, 10-acre farm zoning, those are very common minimum parcel sizes. And so that's how that range was selected.
So that's not really set in some other code in the county? That's just set in this process? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And I believe there's a little bit of consistency here with the ag event center ordinance, which starts at a 10-acre minimum where you're afforded latitude for, you know, additional events, not being a winery, but 10 acres is where that, you know, event center ordinance begins, 10, 20, and 40s, I believe, parcel sizes.
Okay. I guess kind of what, I shouldn't say it this way, maybe what I would have liked to hear is that there's some complexities associated with establishing a winery that on a small parcel would require, or you'd want to make a look at, the county would want to look at a minor use permit. But I don't know if I heard that or not, but...
Yeah, I would just add, you know, there's more, you know, if you're talking smaller acreage, 4.6-acre parcels, you have a lot more neighbors that may be impacted by that winery as opposed to a much larger acreage where surrounding zoning might be also larger too. So there may be more of an impact where you want that discretionary level of review, and that's kind of the basis for that.
Let me see, the normal environmental CEQA process would end up in a negative declaration one that are, you wouldn't expect very many of these to go to environmental impact, Steve.
Right, that would depend on the project. As the project comes in, there would be an environmental review, and it could be an exemption, it could be a negative declaration, or it could be an EIR. It just determines on the, it's determined by the specifics of the project that comes in.
Okay, so when they come in and describe what they want to do, could at that point make a determination of a negative declaration?
Right, but yeah, they're not necessarily all EIRs, they're not necessarily negative declarations either, so...
Okay. Let me see, I think I'm kind of headed down the track of small wineries. I guess I was, wasn't real clear on, you know, somebody that's just starting up a winery and can't afford to do all the things, and it sounded like the county would want to support them somehow, but that's kind of a promise instead of anything in the zoning ordinance. So you have anything more on that that you can describe, or maybe go over it again so it's clearer?
Nothing as it relates to the code. I mean, I think I would defer to talking more about that Winery and Farm Brewery Task Force, that really that was, that was put forth to support people who are coming in and people who want to start up a business. And so, you know, the earlier on, we can meet with individuals about what their project is and how big they want to be if they want to have a building at all or not, then we can advise them on how to get through the regulations. And so, you know, that, the establishment of that task force is sort of my best answer to that right now, but in the code, you know, it sort of is what it is.
Well, I guess one scenario I'm thinking about, you know, you have a small winery and the road won't meet the fire code, and so, you know, they want to produce the grapes to produce, production, wine, but is there provision that they could team up with another winery or find another place to actually sell the product? Or would that be prohibited?
There's not an explicit provision for that. We have heard that discussed, you know, in order to support sites that have better infrastructure for public access, there's not really an explicit provision. I would say, you know, we have talked as a task force about, you know, trying to think of like that small startup model or even a menu of options, like building types and options for starting up, but we haven't really, we haven't taken that far, obviously, as putting it into the code. Wouldn't live necessarily in the code, but again, it's more kind of built into our task force consultation.
It's built into what now?
The consultation that the Winery and Farm Brewery Task Force provides for incoming operators.
Okay, I don't know if I'm following that, but at any rate, I guess what this says is that a winery can only sell the products that they produce onsite, and so that probably would exclude the small guy, guy or gal from, you know, joining up with another winery to sell their wine.
I think if you're looking for explicit provisions on that, we would ask you to, you know, to make that recommendation or advise us on that today.
No, I didn't catch what you said. That was too fast, sorry.
If you are looking for a specific provision on that particular matter, we'd have to, we'd have to analyze that and look at that, but we'd be looking for you to advise us today.
Okay, so that could come up later, is what you're saying, or probably would?
One is what you're growing, and one is what you're producing. When you're producing wine, it's there from another site, because you're only growing because you grow on your site. It's a different issue.
Yeah, but when you want to sell, when you want to sell your wine, you can only sell it, the wine that you produced on your site.
Yeah, you can produce wine on your site, but grapes from other stores.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
All right. Do you have any more comments?
That's...
Yep, go ahead.
Your seatmates made you the ass.
I have a few questions, and one of them is related to discussion around the zone in which was reviewed within the county. I think it was brought up that the entire county should have been looked at, interested in council's perspective, if that was done adequately and the right way.
Sure. And I'd probably direct this question to Nick Papani of Rainey, the environmental consultant.
Great. Good afternoon, Chair, members of the commission. Nick Papani with Rainey Planning and Management, EIR consultant for the county on the project. With respect to the public comment, we did receive comments of that nature. And in the final EIR, I just wanted to point out, we do have a master response that deals with that. It's master response two. And essentially, what that kind of focuses in on is, this is a county-wide ordinance, no question about that. We do project based on historic growth rates and looking at other foothill counties, Amador, for example, El Dorado, at a total of about 30 new facilities we might expect over the next 20 years. So that's kind of our cumulative horizon. With 30 future facilities, that's obviously a finite number, and they have to go somewhere, and they can't go everywhere. So then we have to look at, you know, what's reasonable to assume for our overall analysis. And in coming up with those conclusions, we reached out to some key experts on that matter, agricultural commissioners, as well as the UC Extension that deals with this type of stuff on a regular basis. And what's important is various climatic factors in terms of producing that, that, those sugars in the grape. So it looks at foothill regions that are, you know, areas that aren't in the valley, where you have frost considerations and concerns that would render wineries in the valley area not as productive. Also, as you get high up into the higher elevations of the county, you have frost issues that's problematic. So you don't typically find the wineries up in the higher elevations of the county. So when you kind of put this whole picture together, you know, that's really part and parcel why you're seeing these wineries kind of concentrate within the western portion of Placer County, you know, east of Lincoln, but west of the higher elevations. And so what the EIR is required to do is to evaluate the potential impacts of this project using reasonable assumptions. And we think we've done that, and we have substantial evidence to say we don't need to look at potential effects of wineries in the High Sierra area, because that's really not where we're going to find them. But that said though, we do have some language in here that recognizes there may be, you know, let's say, an outlier, a facility that comes in and somewhere outside of this winery, kind of growth regions that we have identified, based on those geographic and climatic factors. But that's certainly not going to be an area where they begin to concentrate. It's going to be kind of a, you know, an exception, if you will. So the effects of that are going to be relatively limited, and that the county roads can handle those volumes from one facility. It's not going to be an area where they congregate. So we're comfortable with the analysis that we've done, and based on reasonable assumptions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to make a few other comments, and I feel like there's some gaps with, in particular, in this, the deal with startups. I'm uneasy to hear that some of those that exist might be put out of business if they had to follow some of these regulations now. I don't like the sound of that. And then there's also more gaps with that four to six to 10-acre level. Seems like there's more clarification that needs to be done there. And then with large, large wineries, I think, understanding the impact or considering a large winery coming in, and these events, seems to be a lot of questions about existing wineries and how events translate to them, and what they would need to fall under with those issues. I really like, also like, Mr. Nader's suggestion of a phone line to help with some of the issues that can relate to the noise and complaints, and having a log of events in the county and what's happening, then those can be cross-referenced and understood. We also talked about earlier, equipping police officers with noise detection devices so they can also enforce code onsite immediately. I think that might address some of the public's concerns as well. So I don't know, I think there's a lot of gaps here, too many gaps almost to make a decision. So I'm leaning towards a continuance at this point to help clarify some of these issues, unless we can hear from, more clarification from staff on these issues. Those are my comments.
Wayne? I can provide some comments to Commissioner Herzog on one of those topics, if you'd like. On the noise code compliance issue, there's a couple avenues that that is addressed, and it's actually discussed in the EIR too. Currently, code compliance works with the sheriff's office for any of those evenings and weekends. And they have a joint agreement between them as to who would handle things. So if there is a noise issue when code, there isn't a code compliance officer available, you can call the sheriff's office. And if you look at Appendix A in the final EIR, is that actual joint policy between the sheriff's office and the county about allocation of duties. There also is a Placer County Connect, which is an online version that complaints can be submitted. And there is code compliance numbers. Now, but it's certainly, I guess it's up to your commission as to whether more should be provided, or whether there should be additional checks. But that's what's in existence right now. Oh, and one other thing, too. The sheriff's office does have noise meters as well as code compliance officers. So.
All right.
Thank you, County Council, for. Thank you, County Council, for speaking to some of those things, and I appreciate Commissioner Herzog as well, and the chair. Maybe we could streamline administratively some of these things with regard to the noise. It's not helpful if the county, for example, has three noise pieces of equipment, and they're all down in Roseville. Okay? So, or they're in the vehicles that somebody's transporting to the jail, you know, in Auburn. And the call is up at, you know, so-and-so at a place. So anyways, geographically not possible, or situationally not possible. Those are the kind of things I think we'd work administratively with the department to try and resolve, or maybe to allocate additional equipment, so that those, all of the vehicles have those things, cost-dependent, of course. But that's what I would say there, is to the extent that we can, to try and look at those things, you know, because I am the one that is, I think, arguably the only one with the law enforcement background up here that can talk about those things. So that's what I would say to that. And I didn't mean to cut in. I have plenty of things of my own to say when it's my turn. So back to the chair.
All right, Wayne, I think.
Well, I guess I want to follow up some comments that I made earlier. I would really, I agree with Nathan. I think there's, we have new information that I think needs further clarification to us before we make the decision. So I'm certainly supportive of what Nathan is suggesting. I think we need to continue this item for 60 days and have you clarify some of these for us. But I want to go back to what I was mentioning earlier, and again, I mentioned in last April, where I had asked for a tracking process for these events. And as I said earlier, I think we can come up with a streamlined way that is onerous for these operators to deal with, where they can go online and at least notify us of what they're doing. And that way, we have a tracking process. And then if a violation occurs and they have not informed us of it, then we need to have a conversation with them about that. I also had mentioned previously about having a sign notification on the property. It doesn't have to be, you know, large and conspicuous, but at least available, where it has the phone numbers of the operator, like a cell phone or something where people can, hopefully, instead of bringing the law enforcement involvement, can have direct contact with the owner or responsible party to resolve the issue. And so that takes, again, us out of the enforcement position that I don't think we want or necessarily can. Because I believe most of these operators are responsible. They want to be responsible. So if there's an issue, I think maybe there's ways to work that out directly. So I think a sign on the property, and again, I know when I mentioned this, it was responding to say, well, this is a code enforcement issue. But I'd really like both of these things to be addressed as an ordinance issue, both on how we track, and also how we allow the public to be engaged with the property owner. Or as a backup to that, then the phone number, which I've been talking about, is a possibility of having, at least where they get a voicemail, they can leave that voicemail and saying, you know, so we got a date stamp on a particular issue that we can try to address. So those are two things. And again, I would suggest that we look at a 60-day continuance of this, so that we can get some of these important issues resolved. Let's get it right. We all want to do that. And Nikki, you've done an unbelievable amount of work. I know you told me earlier, you dream about this at night. So I think we need to, you know, certainly for all parties involved, we need to, I think we need to move this forward, but I think we want to be judicious about it in ways that we make sure that we're addressing the whole issue.
All right.
Thank you.
Sam, did you have a comment?
Now, you're ready?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chair, if you take a look at the room here, this is the biggest number of participants we've had in quite some months. And these are all folks that have taken time off of their schedules to come here, because it's a matter of great importance to them. So I don't think we can, we can look at any of the issues with any less than the seriousness that they deserve. So I appreciate, and I know my colleagues will join me in echoing the sentiment that each of you has taken off your, you know, the time from your work and families to be here, as we have. And it is important to us that you bring those issues. It is not a one-size-fits-all situation, and I think that we all recognize the importance that those of you that are the pioneers in the winery and the brewery business, that what you bring to Placer County, and as far as the, well, the reputation and the draw that you bring to this county when it comes to tourism, I think that that is worth something in and of itself at several different degrees. I think that how you are treated is something else. And we, many of you started in the businesses that you did because you moved from somewhere else, you brought a skill from another county. The gentleman that spoke towards, the idea of plaster grown in Placer is a nice concept. But, you know, if I were to say, let's bring Stanislaus grown, well, you know, the wines that are grown over in Stanislaus are a lot of the wines that go into the box wines, the jug wines. So it'd be a silly idea for us, no offense to Stanislaus County or Fresno County. It would be a silly idea, because you're trying to look at certain varietal kinds of wines, that you want to bring in certain species of grape in here that are, that appeal to a palate, and you're trying to bring in things that, as the other gentleman said, that you're not necessarily looking at mass quantities, you're looking at quality. So, you know, again, not one-size-fits-all. Those that have been the pioneers here, sorry if I'm meandering a little bit, those that have been the pioneers need to be treated with that respect. They came in here, they developed their capital, they developed their products. And I don't think that those folks, it is very important that we recognize that they're, how they are going to move forward with their business models, that when we are forcing them down a certain road, so to speak, that requires them that the investments that they're going to move, what the person that spoke to having to make improvements in bathroom facilities for their wine tasting customers. So when you're running an operation like that, you either, well, we're going to have this much money this year to make this kind of an investment change in our operation. So it's either going to be this, or it's going to be this. It's not like we can make, okay, we're going to get this piece of equipment, this tractor, and we're going to do that. It's one, one choice. So we force all of these different kind of changes at one time simultaneously, and that's going to put many of these businesses right out of business. Secondly, we don't really want, those that moved to Placer County oftentimes moved here to escape from other more urban centers, the person that lived in West Roseville. I certainly can understand that. We don't want to Sacramentoize and legislate what's going on in Placer County. Do you think what comes out of that capital that I worked in for 20 years, is everything that comes out of there, it turns out there is a good thing? It's not. So we certainly don't want to do that in this county. So I appreciate and respect what so many of you have to say. I'll echo what a number of my colleagues have said. Let's do this thing right. Let's take it, take our time in doing it. Let's not put something out for the sake of putting it out. I'm not being critical to the staff or anyone else. I think we have done a good start at getting it right. But let's make sure we come out with a product, with a product that everyone can be proud of. And we've all participated in, and we come out with something that helps those that are the pioneers that have spoken. And we also have an equal footing for those that come in with a business model that want to do something. And we're helping them provide, provide that venue and that availability, that flexibility. I want to see that kind of flexibility, that we can allow these businesses to really grow and prosper. And, Mr. Chair, with that, that concludes my comments for this time. So I would support a continuance.
All right.
Okay, I'll.
We'll go with.
Yeah. I guess, you know, I think we've been talking about this winery ordinance ever since I've been on the planning commission. And so, you know, I appreciate what you're saying, but, you know, I think it's come a long way. I think it's come a long way. So I don't want to, you know, really be frustrated thinking that this is not a really good product, because I think it is. There are some things that we've talked about that probably could be fixed. One of the ones is, we did receive a statement of proposals from, from an organization that wants to build a large winery on a large acreage, over 40 acres. And so I've looked through this. I guess maybe the gist of that is, they're saying that, you know, they'd like to be able to clarify some things in a condition use permit. At least when I read the document, I think it pretty much provides for that. But I look at the wording changes that they've suggested here, and they seem to make sense, or they seem to be helpful. So I would support those wording changes. And I guess I, I think it's still frustrating to have to go through and do some more work on this document. I don't, you think it's going to take 60 days to deal with these issues? Or, you know, 60 days seems like a long time. We've been working on this forever.
You know, I think that's fair, especially given the upcoming, you know, commission meetings and so forth. I mean, what we're hearing, I think we have pretty good direction today, based on the discussion of all the comments. But we really do need to go back. We need to get with Rainey and Associates, our environmental consultant, to see if, what, and if there are any sequel implications to any of these changes. I think a good portion of them, there probably won't be, but we need to, we need to go look at that. So that's going to take a little time. You know, can we do that in 60 days? I think so. I think that's a fair, you know, a fair ask. So, you know, I think we go back, we do that, we come back with a revised ordinance, with all those changes that would not put us in this additional environmental analysis that would take longer than 60 days. But we'll let you know if there's, some of those exist at the time we come back. But I think we could package something up together, you know, so by April, around that time, we could come back with something that you guys could make a recommendation on.
EJ, we've indicated that we've got a pretty busy schedule coming in March and maybe beyond. So just, we have to find a time where we can fit it in, because this is not going to be a short subject.
Well, you know, I guess I wanted to, maybe I already said it, but, you know, I've seen this product come a long ways. And so, at least my view, if we're doing a continuance, we have some suggestions here to take a look at. And, you know, I think 60 days is fine. I just want to recognize that the work that's been done, I want to recognize the staff, you know, on how far they've brought this ordinance along. And, you know, let's fix it a little bit, and try to deal with the issues that came up today. But, you know, I don't want to see this go for another two years.
Neither do we. So, no, I can assure you, it's going to be all hands on deck. And so it's just a matter of, you know, figuring out the meetings that are coming up. And also, you know, there may be a Tahoe meeting, and so we need to have that meeting here in Auburn. So the folks who are attending today, if they wish to attend, they can do that here in Auburn. So, yeah, we'll make every effort to make that work.
I guess, EJ, the question I would have, but you sort of answered it to some degree, I would have for you and Nikki, have we given you enough direction on specific issues that we'd like to see addressed when you come back to us?
I believe I'm comfortable, but I'll defer to my colleagues here to see if there's anything additionally that we might want some clarification. If you just give us a minute. anything additionally that we might want some clarification, if you just give us a minute.
Right, Jeff?
I guess, Chairman, one of the things that I have a concern about and it's been brought up by several people here, the term grandfather, when we're dealing with land use is another way of saying the beginning of the end. I don't think anything that is grandfathered in is intended to stay there in perpetuity. It's intended to eventually be phased out by circumstances or conditions. And so, so I, that, that term kind of doesn't give me great comfort in that the existing operators are going to, to be left alone, for lack of a better term. There's triggers that, that prevent grandfathered items from making improvements or, or, or that kind of thing that, that just would concern me about using that term. If, if we're going to allow them, we should allow them by ordinance. That being said, though, if we do have enough direction for staff, I would make a motion that.
I haven't had my shot.
You haven't had your shot, I'm sorry.
Been waiting, so is there anyone else on the commission? All right. Trying to be. All right. A couple of things, grandfathering, if you as a staff would look into the concept of tiering the permits rather than if somebody comes in for one item that you have to bring everything into compliance and, and look at tiering so that somebody can improve their business over time. Again, health and safety is probably the, the primary concern, but I think take a look at it where somebody can incrementally improve their business, make the business better, make the site better over time. Large wineries, I think you have the choice of land use changes, which also includes zoning changes, or the event center. I don't know that this is the place to deal with large wineries in this ordinance. This seems to be really focused on the smaller ordinance, or the smaller wineries in the county and encouraging those. And if you're getting into event centers and conference centers, et cetera, take a look at how your events center ordinance and the winery ordinance do or do not merge, and also if it's appropriate to look at additional land uses that might provide for that. Because I think they are appropriate in the county, but again, if you have a residential neighborhood and you're putting in something fairly large that's operating eight to, eight to 10, you know, I'm, I'm not sure if this is the ordinance where that goes. So I'd really like to take a look at how to accommodate those in the county, but in the appropriate way. On enforcement, I was glad to hear that you have the ability to enforce complaints on the website. I mean, I was on the Mac and heard a number of these comments early on and it seems like it's not always the noise level, but it's the type of noise. And specifically the issue of if you, if the close-off is 10 o'clock, I recall hearing that, you know, the caterers were out there till 11 o'clock cleaning up whatever. So is it really important, I think, to allow the residents who are hearing this, make a complaint online so that can be followed through? And then if you would discuss also the enforcement procedures, I'm assuming that especially with a MUP, we could, if there, if there's a site that is not complying, that we could come back and remove that permit at some point in time if they're not complying. But I think it's important if, if these regulations are not being complied with, especially noise, that we can come back and remove that permit and, and resolve that issue through that. And I'd like to see that come to the planning commission in a hearing before the commission. There was a comment about restaurants between catering and a, and a full-size kitchen. I really don't know what the issue is, so if you could come back and explain the issue and maybe options to resolve that would be appreciated. And then I guess this is for the attorney, what kind of comments can still come in over this period of time? And the one thing I wanted to thank those who, at this point in time, actually wrote comments that suggested changes to the code and where it was rather than just general statements, because we're at a point in time where if there are comments, it should be change code section, whatever, to whatever, rather than just, you know, I don't like it or it may be too noisy, you know, specifically what do we do? We're at that point in time where we need that kind of, so. So if you could answer on comments from here on.
Sure. So I guess the first part of that, the comment period on the EIR is closed.
Right.
That being said, that we will certainly look at any comments that come in with respect to the staff report and changes and evaluate those. I guess the, the preference or hope would be that those come in sooner than later to give staff a time to evaluate them. But yeah, certainly any comments on the, on the staff report or the ordinance certainly are allowed up until, up until the time that it comes back and the commission deliberates on it.
Appreciate that. So, you know, with that, I would, I would also agree to let the staff go back and look at these things and come back to us, so I would be open to that kind of a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we direct staff to go back and address some of the concerns expressed by the commission and the public and come back before this commission, no later than 60 days.
We have a first and second on the motion. Roll call, please.
Sorry about that. I have a first by Mr. Moss, a second by Mr. Cannon, so vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Herzog?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
That concludes the meeting, so the meeting is adjourned.